Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Coltsneck High School. It's a pleasure and an honor to have you all here for tonight's program. I'd like to begin the program, if we could, with the presentation of our colors, and then allow Mr. Heshy to hit the roses to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. So at this point, the color guard needs to present the colors.
Color guard, okay. Hey, red, color. Red, set, go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To its eternal power, its stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Forward, color. Right, march. Forward, march.
You may be seated. And I'll turn it back over to you.
Pursuant to the Open Blooded Beans Act, Chapter 231 Public Laws in 1975, this meeting is newly advertised by Asbury Park Press, issue of January 18th, 2013. All municipal clerks, townships, and boroughs in the regional high school district have been duly notified and requirements posted with notices sent. Communications are on file in the board office, reports in the pen.
Okay, so I want to thank everyone for coming out to regular board meeting, right? That's why everyone's here. We have, we have the good fortune, this evening, we're recognizing over 190 students and faculty members for exemplary achievement in a wide array of activities, athletics, extracurriculars, such. In a regional district of six, comprehensive high schools, you know, I think that many of these accomplishments too often don't get the recognition they deserve, so that's why we are committed to holding these evenings three times a year. And I'd like to start it off by, since Coltsneck is hosting, we'll call Mr. Land to represent Coltsneck High School.
It is going to be an intense night, there's a lot of folks, a lot of kids to be honored. So first, let me start by congratulating each and every one of you on your outstanding contributions to their new schools and to the district. I will get started, if I may, by introducing the advisor for our family, career, and community Leaders of America club, Ms. Megan Reeves.
Good evening. This year, I had the pleasure of starting Coltsneck High School's first ever FCCLA, or Family Community Career Leaders of America. District competes in fashion, food, environmental, and child development events. For our first year, not only did we bring home one bronze, four silver, and six gold medals, Coltsneck High School will be represented on July 5th in Tennessee at the FCCLA Nationals event of environmental ambassadorship. And we will present an award to Danny Godrich. Thank you.
We also had a couple of students who did very well at this year's state DECA competition. We have two students who will be moving on to the national competitions in Anaheim, California. But at this point, I'd like to introduce Ariel Copman and Noel Cutler. In the category of a captain's ownership written event, Ariel wrote a 30-page business plan for a proposed yogurt shop. She was also this year's DECA secretary and will be representing Coltsneck and the district at the 2013 International Career Development Conference in California. Noel, a junior, is president of the Coltsneck DECA chapter. She competed in partnership with Ariel in the team event category known as marketing communications. She will also be competing at this year's national competition in California. Congratulations, ladies. We also have a number of students who did very well in the allshore orchestra competition, band competition. We have four students who earned allshore status. They are Michael Capoletti, Capoletti in the jazz band, Capoletti. We have Kristen Minor in symphonic band. This year at Coltsneck High School, we had one of our students achieve the high honor of Eagle Scout in the Boy Scouts. So I'd like to introduce Mr. Ryan Spence. As a captain, Ryan earned the Eagle Scout medal. Ryan built a menorah for a temple in Kombi. So congratulations. I'd also like to take this opportunity to congratulate our head football coach, Mr. Drake Lakava. He couldn't be here with us tonight, but I'm very happy to accept these awards on his behalf. Mr. Lakava took over the program in 2009 here at Coltsneck, rebuilding the offense and defense and special team philosophies to an entirely new way of walking, talking, and acting. It's not easy, but it paid off. The improvement can be attributed to the fact that the staff never wavered from their program. The program has become what Coach Lakava envisioned it could become: dedicated, selfless, and mentally young and physically tough young men and women of high character. I mean, young men of high character. The Cougars the past year went 9-2. It was the most wins for our football team in the school's history. Mr. Coach Lakava was named as the 2012 Coach of the Year for football by the Asbury Park Press. He was also named Coach of the Year at the annual Vince Lombardi Award Ceremony. So I'd like to congratulate Coach Lakava for announcing this. Now, I'd like to turn the mic over to our CICA, here at Coltsneck High School, an incredibly hardworking individual who's going to take over the next two announcements, Jeanette Bruna.
First and foremost, I'd like to congratulate everyone who is in the room, because without your parental hard work and all the other duties that go with, those student athletes could not be as successful, and those students couldn't be successful without it. So thank you very much. The first athlete to vote to the front was named to the first team allshore football team, Mr. Tim Vangelis. Two years, a pre-sport athlete here at Coltsneck High School, and over the past two football seasons, Tim has been one of the best receivers in the Shore Conference. This past season, he was the number-one receiver in Shore. He led the Shore in receptions, touchdowns, and receiving yards. He has set all of Coltsneck football records for receiving. Tim embodies all of the characteristics that we want in all of our student athletes. He is dedicated, selfless, and has tremendous character. He was named first team All-Aid North, first team allshore, first team allMonmouth County, and first team allGroup Four. So congratulations to Tim. The team has defense to lock yet on a full athletic scholarship. I'd like to introduce you to the two District 21 wrestling champions for Coltsneck High School, who happen to be brothers, Mr. Nick Ottamiano and Mr. Peter Otten. We'll start with the younger brother, Mr. Nick Ottamiano, is a junior. He is in his third year, and he has been a varsity member in the three years he's been here. He compiled a 31 and 6 record this year. He was a District 21 champion at 113 pounds. Bet you he's not 113 now. Peter Ottamiano was a senior captain for the team, and he led the team very well. I'm proud to say that in his four years here, he is now the win leader for Coltsneck High School, amassing 110 wins in his four years at Coltsneck High School. The next I'd like to call up, I'd like to have Coach Joseph Leits assist me. Coach Leits is one of our winter track coaches, and he's wanting to assist me in the next two athletes, Ms. Julia Petrouche and Ms. Jackie Wolpin. Julia Petrouche has been a leader on the team since her sophomore year. For winter track, she's like having another coach out there. She took first place in Monmouth County in the 55-hairdles, first place in the Shore Conference in the 55-hairdles. She was named first team allcounty and allshore. She did get her sectionals, and regretfully could not finish the remainder of that season, but she will be competing on scholarship at the College of Hollywood Charleston this year. Had a strong beginning to the season, as she started out second in Monmouth County in the 55-meter, third in the Shore Conference in the 55-meter, but she really turned it up when it came to the sectionals. She came in first in Central Jersey Group Three Championships, fourth in the groups, and third place in the 200 in the Eastern States. She is qualified to compete at the Nationals in both the 55 and the 200, first time in school history for any of our winter athletes. I'd now ask for Master Chief Duncan to assist in the next honors.
Hi, good evening, everybody. The six young men, I'd like to call up here now, they competed in the New Jersey State Physical Fitness Competition for the championship on March 20th of this year. And four years ago, I got here, we didn't even place in this competition. Three years ago, we took third, two last year we took second, and this year, these six gentlemen took first place, they qualified for the San Diego National Championships on San Diego, California this year. They competed in push-ups, pull-ups, sit-ups, three-on-gear shell, standing rod, in a... That's it, I got it. It's a very rigorous competition, but out of 10 teams, something like the Rutgers this year, these young men finished first place, outscoring 120 by over 200 points. So they're going to do well in San Diego next month, May 15, I believe, May 17, I think, is the competition. So I want to introduce them. Senior Joey Rubino is the captain of the team. I'm a senior, Alex Tomar-Gerber. I'm a freshman, I'm part of the team, and I'm a member of the Southern High School.
Next, I'd like to introduce you to Coach Pacola, her boys' basketball program.
Thank you. The next recipient is Brandon Federici. Four years ago, Brandon entered Coltsneck High School as a very young athlete, sophomore year, became very, very cocky, goofy here, probably fumbled, and then senior year, all qualities of a great individual, became a co-captain, and he displayed great character during the course of the senior year. During his four years at Coltsneck High School, during his junior year, Brandon led the Cougars, I said Clippers, I mean Celtics, I'm a little confused. To the finals of the Shore Conference Championship, also to the finals of the Group Three sectional championship. Senior year, Brandon was our leading scorer, was first team allshore by the Asbury Park Press, first team allshore by the Coaches Association, second team allshore by the allshore medium. Late in the season, Brandon had had an injury that prevented him from scoring 1,000 points. Brandon was unable to participate in the state tournament. The Cougars went on and lost in the semifinals of the state tournament. But more importantly, a lot of people remember Brandon as being a great offensive player. Brandon this year displayed great character, and he'll always be remembered by his character, because that puts important athletics today. And congratulations to Brandon Federici.
I'd like to introduce to you, by description, the final FRHSD recipient for Coltsneck High School. He's been a continuous presence in Cougar Athletics for the last 10 years, volunteering his time and expertise with the softball and the girls' basketball programs. You can also see him take pictures pretty much everywhere, cheering on the soccer and the girls' lacrosse teams. His passion for sport and all that they have to offer are athletes' distinct pleasures. When I came into my current position as the CICA at Coltsneck High School five years ago, I inherited him. My predecessors hired him, and I am thanking my every day that she did. He has continued as my assistant, even though that paid position no longer exists. He volunteers his time every day, every single day, for the last four years, coming to work each day by 8:00 a.m., and depending on the day's schedule, he'll stay much later, much later than his pay grade requires. His selflessness and attention to detail has kept Coltsneck High School, all right, my office, from A.M. His morning greetings to all who enter the office with a "Hey Charlie" is synonymous with our morning coffee. Mr. Dingschen has been thrown the proverbial "cur" ball of life. This requires that he attends to his doctor's orders instead, and not to be accessed in the main office. So, on this night, Coltsneck High School wants to present him with an FRHSD medal, but for him, it stands for something different. F is for father, of four beautiful and intelligent children. He is the role model that we can only hope to live up to. He is the helper to everyone on every task needed without ever asking one, although sometimes he asks one. He is the spouse, and will be celebrating his 43rd wedding anniversary with his beautiful wife, Amy. He told us this year, we have two TVs, so you don't fight over the remote. And finally, what does that D stand for? Well, that's easy, that stands for Dingschen. I proudly present to Mr. Dingschen the FRHSD medal and a small contribution from the staff here at Coltsneck High School in excess of $1,300.
Thank you, Coltsneck. I'd like to call Mr. Boeller from Marlborough High School next.
Good evening. First, I'd like to thank Board of Education for supporting us this evening to recognize our students and our student athletes. It's always wonderful you being here with us, sir. Before I get to the floor to Mr. Ryan, I would also like to congratulate all the students and the student athletes on their accomplishments throughout the season, as well as the coaches for all their hard work and dedication. At this time, I'd like to pass the floor over to Mr. Ryan.
Yeah, Marlborough High School, congratulations to all the student athletes and all the students on your accomplishments. Marlborough High School had a very good winter season this year. I'm going to start off with a couple of students, I'm not sure if they can sing, with our allshore chorus is Anisha Natajaron and Joseph Chang. Our next, I know he's not here, because he is actually at our spring musical practice. His name is Matthew Lou. Matthew Lou is a violin player in our orchestra, and he, this, he's a sophomore. This is the fifth time he would have been involved with district medals, and this is his fifth medal. He won an award this year for the Eastern Orchestra as an outstanding young composer, so I'll accept this medal on his behalf. Okay, we also, Marlborough also had one student for our DECA state competition, Kelly Warrens. And Kelly Warrens, first place in the development of a prettier restaurant manager. And next, we have FPLA, our first two tied for the FPLA State Conference for Business Ethics, Erica Wang and Nicole Patel. And we also had our accounting, accounting won at the state conference. We actually had, so Marlborough took first, second, and third place. So in third place, we had Mac Sherman. Second place, we had Gloria Epstein. And first place, we have Victoria Bell. Marlborough High School also had one National Merit Scholar. Destroy his name, even though he's told me three times how to pronounce it, Vi V. Metricondi. Uh, next, we have our Eagle Scout, Mr. Joseph Vitale. I'm going to have Joe come up for a second to stand with him. I'm going to read you a little something about Joe. Joseph Vitale of Marlborough High School is also a scout of Troop 155 in Freehold. He has currently completed his Eagle Scout project, number 2nd, 2012. His project was to build a three-room school for the impoverished children of Guatemala. When Joe first thought of his project, it took about four months of playing and researching ways to make his dream a reality. After his research was complete, he reached out to family members, friends, different clubs and associations in Monmouth County, and his troops started fundraising his project, which began in May of 2012. His goal was to raise a total of $10,000 in about six months to a year. But within less than two weeks, Joe had raised about $12,000. After Joe finished his fundraising, he departed to Guatemala on July 2nd, and the project was completed in exactly four months. With the extra money Joe had raised, that he had fundraised, he decided to take, add an addition onto the school he was building. He built a library. This has been worth it, an Eagle Scout project, a life-changing experience for Joe, which will continue his involvement in the community and for the rest of his life. And I'd like to bring up Brandon Mazarello. Brandon Mazarello is a senior at Marlborough High School. Brandon is the Central Jersey Group Four State Champion in the 800-meter relay, or maybe not, he took the 200-meter run for the second consecutive year. Brandon also set the school record, and has ran the number-three fastest nine in district history in the 800 this past winter. If we have Brandon State here, we're best. Mazarello, Ruben Cruz, Chaz Burns, Zach Van Gola, on down. The Boys Track Team was led by the Spring Metalry Relay Team that just concluded a historic season. The team broke the school and district record on three separate occasions. The Boys first won the Monmouth County Championships, then a week later, won the first Group Four State Relay Title of school history, all-time to beat in the previous district record. In March, the teammate-up-of-dee score individuals finished second place in the Emerging Elite Division at Nationals. In doing so, they once again broke their district record by more than three seconds. The Elite Meet was held in Arcadia, California. They took second place in that meet, and are now, with the time of 3 minutes 33 seconds, 3 minutes 33 seconds, it is the first number-one time right now in New Jersey, and it is number 14 in the nation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Ellie, follow up, Ms. Tigley.
All right, everyone, good evening. I apologize for Ms. Tigley, she is under the weather tonight, as I am too, so maybe something is going around at Greenwood Township High School. I do want to get started with our National Merit Scholar, so could I please have Esther Shumavich to the floor here? All right, according to Mrs. Curran, who is Esther's guidance counselor, Esther is one of the hardest-working students at Greenwood Township. Over the past four years, she has concentrated on building a strong math and science foundation by taking honors and AP courses in each subject area. Esther was particularly proud when her hard work resulted in an invitation to the Governor's School for Engineering and Technology. She has also been an active member of the Science League for the past three years. Esther's high GPA and academic record are indications of her academic dedication and achievement. But for Esther, the most important reward is the satisfaction that accompanies her success. So congratulations to Esther. All right, the next group that we're going to recognize is our Forensics Team. As a former forensics advisor, I can say that our forensics team, or any forensic student that participates, is extremely dedicated. We host a tournament every year. Um, we host a tournament every year, and if you walk around the high school, you will see many people staring into mirrors and practicing their speeches. And sometimes, you know, I get a hold of me, like, what is actually going on in your school right now? The custodians get very confused. But our talent there is undeniable. We have two members of our forensics team who are state championships, who will receive a scholarship and a Governor's Award in arts education. So the first one is Zina Iskowitz for international extant speaking. And also Mark Rinder for impromptu speaking. Mark, you're in impromptu speech? Alright, besides forensics, we do have a very talented music program at Freehold Township as well. Our chorus, as well as our band. For Allshore Symphonic Band, there were 180 students that participated and many were admitted. Over 10% of those admissions came from Freehold Township High School for the Allshore Symphonic Band. They're led by Ed Gatzick, who can't be here tonight. But Ed Gatzick also was named Allshore Band Director of the Year, so a round of applause for Mr. Gatzick. The members of the Allshore Symphonic Band, please come up when your name is called. Denise Doulestore for horn. Nick Felice, trumpet. Edward Green, battery percussion. Evan Lewis, principal mallets. Joseph Majior, tuba. Michelle Major, horn. Brandon Batia, charbonne. Nicole Parre, principal baritone sax, she was the top scorer. Jonathan Rivera Ramirez for the oboe. Cassandra Rose, trombone. And Wendy Seray for battery percussion. And to introduce our Allshore chorus, please welcome Mrs. Susan Connors. Would you like to sing? Would you like to sing?
Good evening. I'd like to give my sincere thanks first to the administration of Freehold Township, for all of the support that they have shown for the music department. Especially Mrs. Elizabeth Higley, my supervisor, Judy Newans, and of course, to our CICA Pat McAvoy. Out of the hundreds who have auditioned from the surrounding shore counties, only a select number were chosen to rehearse and perform in mixed course for this year. This year, Freehold Township sent 14 to audition, and out of the 14, half of them made it. So I had seven that were represented. I'm proud to congratulate the following members, please come up. Kelsey McDonough, junior. Peter Villarreal Ramirez. Senior Stan Mathieu. Bradley Bolito. David Tompkins. Denise Doulestore. And Zina Shidovitch.
Alright, to discuss our winter athletic accomplishments, please welcome Coach Todd Brains for our track performance.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. McAvoy, Mrs. Higley, and the entire Freehold Township High School administrative team for your support throughout the season. This past winter track and field season was perhaps the most successful ever for the program on both the boys' and girls' sides. The program has enjoyed recent high levels of success lately, but this past season, the athletes took it to a new level. This past season, four boys and four girls won Group Four State Championships. I would ask that they come up and receive their medals first. Dylan Tarby won the Group Four State Championship in the 3200 meter run as an individual, and won the Central Jersey Group Four Title in the 1600 meter run and 3200 meter run as well. Dylan also ran the anchor leg of the Group Four State Champion Distance Medley Relay Team. Dylan has solidified himself as the greatest distance runner in Freehold Township High School history, and is on his way to become one of the greatest athletes, period, in our district's history. He's already up here, so. Dylan wants us to go. Next, Kevin Sumate won the Group Four State Championship in the 1600 meter run, just a couple hours before his teammate Dylan won the 3200 meter run as an individual, and ran the leadoff leg of the Group Four State Championship running the Distance Medley Relay Team. Kevin also recently signed his National Letter of Intent to Run on a scholarship to Monmouth University beginning next fall. Kevin Sumate. Joining Dylan and Kevin on the before-mentioned Distance Medley Relay Team were Kevin Edgeworth and Joe Mazarello. The four members of the team combined for a dramatic comeback win, the first in school history. Could Kevin and Joe please come on up and join Kevin and Dylan? Thank you. Okay, and on the girls' side, there was also plenty to celebrate. Starting with the quartet of Abby Faith, Caitlin Boss, Adrienne Befallo, and Emily Bracker. Those four girls combined for one of the greatest four-by-eight hundred meter relay teams in short conference history and the greatest in district history. The four ran the ninth fastest time in the history of the state of New Jersey. They set heat records for Monmouth County and the Group Four State Relay Championships. They won the Group Four Title by almost nine seconds. For the first Group Four running, uh, for the first Group Four running relay team champion in school history. Could those four ladies please come up and be recognized? Those four were also a huge part of the greatest track and field team in school history. This season, the girls' team won the Monmouth County Relay Championships, as well as its first-ever Central Jersey Group Four Team Titles. The state sectional championship is the first in any of the three running seasons in school history for a girls' team. They accomplished this feat with great enthusiasm, motivation, camaraderie, and determination. I'd like to call up the individual members of the team to be recognized. Um, maybe we should just applaud at the end, hold your applause. It's a 28-person list, so just bear with me. Uh, first up, Giselle Maragato, a freshman. Brittany Woodson, senior. Dominique Pantone, a sophomore. Sidney Assow, a sophomore. Alexander Fulmer, sophomore. Adrian RZ, Emily, Caitlin, Abby. Jess Phoebe, Abby's sister, is a senior. Brianna Roche, who also recently just signed a National Letter of Intent to Run at Fordham University next year on scholarship. She has several hundred blocks. Kira Ray, your sister, a freshman. Kira O'Donoghue. Katie LaBarbara. Rose Eric. Rebecca Leviton. Jackie Hall. Sabrina Healy. Lindsay Truskauski. Francesca Musto. Amy Emekin. Alexis Barker. Rihanna Lutimko. Jess Knabla. Megan Incanteluco. Gabby Medina. And Senior Captain Deanna Johnson. Congratulations to these young ladies. And just one more on track recognition as well. Dylan Tarby can come back up because you also were a first-team All-State, um, oh, excuse me, first-team All-Group Four for winter track. Thank you. Alright, it's gone for Freehold Township, thank you.
So Dylan's won so many medals, I actually owed him a medal from two times ago. I'm gonna give this to him to collect all this stuff. I'd now like to call up Mrs. Jewel for field placement.
Good evening, everyone, and again, my congratulations. There's, I think there's six people in this room tonight that I just, having walked a mile in their shoes, I'd like to acknowledge the job that they all do, and that's the six CICs. They make a lot of what you're hearing about, the graduatory things that we're hearing about tonight happen. They do the rescheduling, they get the buses, they do they, do they, do they do, on and on and on. So congratulations to the efforts and all of the hard work of the six CICs that keep all of this rolling along. All of our awards tonight are athletic in nature, so I'll be turning it over to the, uh, Ms. Jerelyn Acevedo, the CICA from Freehold High School. I just would also like to acknowledge that nine athletes from Freehold Borough High School have signed National Letters of Intent with two more pending. That's, um, that's quite an accomplishment. We're one of comparatively smaller schools, and we have, to date, none of our athletes going on partial or full rides for their athletic achievements. So congratulations, so much for today.
Thank you, Mrs. Jewel. I'd like to thank all of the parents for coming out tonight, not only coming out tonight but being able to support your sons and daughters throughout their athletic and extracurricular career. I'd also be remiss if I didn't mention the outstanding staff and coaching staff that we have at Freehold Borough High School. My coaches work very hard, and not only is it the athletes and the parents that get the recognition, but the coaches should get the recognition as well. So thank you for the hard job that you do in making my life as a CICA relaunching. Our fall season did not disappoint. We have a very strong tradition at Freehold Borough High School in winning championships in the fall season, and this year, again, did not disappoint. The girls' soccer team finished 17-2, divisional winners and runners-up in the short conference tournament, a very tough game against Tom's River North. I had two co-head coaches this year, just to mention the job that my coaching coach does. Miss Elise Ingwe was pregnant during the preseason, and her and Coach Jody Smith worked very well together throughout the season, not only to make sure that the girls were properly trained, but also communication between their parents, the administration, the Star Ledger, Asbury Park Press, so on and so forth. So they worked very well together, and I want to thank them and congratulate them with having come on here.
Okay, congratulations to everyone here and to their honors that they've earned. Uh, the girls' soccer season, the fall, we came home from very successful season. Um, and we had three girls specifically honored with multiple awards. And it was just, I just engaged with how dominant our defense was. These three athletes were the core to our defense, allowing two goals in conference play, which we went on to feed it in, and six goals throughout the entire season of 19 games. Uh, our first athlete is Sophia Duffin, she's a sophomore, a star. She's a sophomore central defender, brings the game really where it's at all times. Uh, Sophia's an amazing athlete, just tenacity and passion for the game. There's only a testament to the honors that she's won. Uh, but this year, she was selected to the All-Division Team, All-District Team, All-Monmouth County Team, as well as first team Allshore as a sophomore. Our second athlete is a Quincy Serial, who's a sophomore central defender. She's also the most consistent and focused athlete that I think I've coached throughout the time I've been here. Um, she was a pleasure to be coached. She puts up this brick wall when she plays, and she makes it really difficult for any offense to break it down. Uh, she was selected to the All-Division Team, All-District Team, All-Monmouth County, and first team All-Group Three as a sophomore, as well as first team Allshore. Our third and final athlete is, has been the single star program, Sarah Cobb. Um, she's gonna be sorely missing the ball for us next year. She's our senior goalkeeper as well as our captain. She earned 47 shout-outs of 78 games in her career. Um, she also had 15 shout-outs this year. Sarah has an outstanding overtime record of 10-1-4 with five wins in penalty shootouts, five to one penalty shootouts. Uh, she was awarded the John Cobb Senior Excellence Award from Monmouth County for the Shore Soccer Official Association. She was also selected to the All-Division Team, All-District Team, All-Monmouth County Team, the Second Team All-Group Three, the First Team Allshore. She was also selected as the Asbury Park Press's, uh, Soccer, uh, Girl Soccer Player of the Year.
Our winter season also did not disappoint. Is Matt with me in present? Okay. Matt, come on down. Matt's a junior at Freehold High School. He broke the record in 100 backstroke, 200 medley relay, 400 freestyle. He came second overall in the 503 in Monmouth County, second overall in the 100 free, short conference third overall in the 50 free, second overall in the 100 back, and first team Allshore for boys' swimming. The biggest highlight by far of our season was the girls' basketball team. Girls' basketball team amassed a record of 23 and 6, and was able to knock down regular power hustles like Freehold Township South, Neptune High School en route to their first-ever Group Three State sectional championship. When we talk about games that rule forever, no one will ever forget the game at our school against Neptune High School that almost went into overtime if it wasn't for the five young ladies' hard work, dedication, and the fact that they not want to lose to Neptune High School again. To say that the parents of these young ladies have been through an emotional roller coaster is an understatement. To come in as freshmen and to be able to, you know, they took their lumps and bruises going through a very tough divisional conference for four years, and then to be able to come up with a record of 23 and 6 and win the first-ever sectional title says a lot about the dedication of not only the parents... a lot about the dedication of not only the parents, but also the players. Coach Jeff Ruzuki, who's voted on as Divisional Coach of the Year, in my opinion, she should have also been Shore Conference Coach of the Year. The job that she's done with these young ladies from their freshman year until now of the senior group definitely will go down as one of the best championships and memories ever made at Freehold Borough High School. Coach Ruzuki.
Thank you Board of Education for acknowledging us tonight, as well as our administration. Yes, this year has been memorable. The four years that I've had these girls, like Ms. Sainz Vito has said, we went from four wins, season one, seven wins, season two, thirteen wins, season three, and this year, twenty-three and six. You couldn't ask for a better group of girls to coach on and off the court. They get the job done in the classroom, they get the job done on the court. The game that Acevedo spoke about briefly, at home versus Neptune. Well, before these, specifically the three senior starters, before they came to me as freshmen, we were in the finals of the Group Three sectional against Neptune at Alston Excite. And there was no doubt in my mind that we were winning that game. But, as the game played out, we lost at the buzzer. Here we were, year four, with a new group of girls, showed hard work, dedication, when it's overtime, and this time, the outcome was on our side. You couldn't be any more proud to be part of Freehold Borough and a colonial than I was that night. And I would like to thank all the girls, my assistant coaches, as well as Mrs. Jewell and her administration, administrative staff, for everything they have done along the way for us. So, girls, please come up and receive your awards. Captain Cameron Spahn, Captain Kim Dana, Sarah Cobb, Caitlin Ortiz, Samantha Candell, Rebecca Cobb, Sophia Duffy, Erica Bay Street. Round out our sweep. Good job, girls.
Thank you, Freehold High School. I'd like to call up Mr. Angelozi and Almonsta.
I'd first like to congratulate all the award recipients tonight. Since the last district report tonight at the end of the fall season, we've had numerous students itself who have been out of the classroom, I'm going to start the presentation from an adolescent high school with the academic achievements. To begin, we have three National Merit Scholarship finalists in Carol Chen, Haileang Lee, and Miriam Murdy. Before I came here back in my office, I did a little bit of math with some numbers. These students' PSAT scores rank in the top 0.1% of students across the country. Additionally, Kenneth Lu finished first in the county in the U.S. National Olympiad for chemistry. Is Kenneth here tonight? He is. And I had to kind of wrap my head around what this meant, but Kenneth now has the opportunity to take the national exam on the fourteenth of April. If he places in the top twenty, he will represent the U.S. in the International Chemistry Olympiad in Moscow, Russia. Now, at this point, that might seem kind of like even far-fetched, top twenty in the entire country. You should know that as a sophomore last year, he placed in the top fifty students nationally, so he absolutely has a chance to do that, and his parents will be extremely proud of that. So, good luck, guys. Now, I'm going to hand the program over to Mr. Ricky.
Good evening, everyone, and congratulations to all the award winners, and thank you once again for your dedication for a lot of these honors, these young men and women. It's always really nice to come here and introduce members of our community and recognize them. I'd like to start off by introducing members of our all-shore courts, I'm sorry choir, all-shore dads, and all-shores and Bonnet bands, when I call your names, I'll just get your award. Sabrina Duckwill, Justin Paris, Nick Maranelli, Adrian Lau, Steve Flattman, Tom Marshall, Brandon Quillen, Elliot Crich, and Perry Hans, April Ince. Now, I'd like to introduce, once again, Ms. Meg Reeves, who is also our FCCLA advisor.
Evening, once again. I've been advising FCCLA and now been through three years now, and in the next three years, we've grown from just thirty students to a hundred and twenty. This year, now, we've given an award for the largest membership in the central region. At this year's group conference, we had forty-eight competing students, and they brought our high school overall in private, with seven bronze medals, sixteen silver medals, and twenty-one gold medals. A lit honor, few of these amazing girls this time. The first student to bring down is Taylor Tivenell. This girl, Taylor, was our freshman star, who'd never sewed before in her life, but she created this strapless, corseted taffeta gown with a high-low hem that earned her gold medal. She also competed in an event called Sewing for Service, where you're given a box of fabric for two hours, the sewing machines, and a set of directions, and basically told you to have one. She actually ended up winning this event for her first time ever. Taylor went on to get two gold medals at the competition, so I'm expecting some great things from this young lady in the future. Next, I'd like to bring down Rachel Hania. Rachel's a junior, and I've had her since her freshman year, and she's been doing amazing work ever since the day she left my classroom. She's done nothing but outstanding things, and this year was no exception. Rachel is receiving an award tonight because she's earned not one but two gold medals this year in evening wear and sewing for service. Rachel has dreamed to be a woolly makeup artist, so I think someday in the future we'll be seeing her name in the credits. Third, I want to honor Rebecca Harrington. Rebecca's a senior, and she's also a double gold medalist. She got a gold medal in evening wear and sewing for service, and she also won her second FCCLA scholarship this year. And Rebecca's doing her other levels now, she's dancing, and her mom is here to accept her award.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Happy birthday.
And lastly, I want to bring down Alexis Clodono. Not only is Alexis a double gold medalist, her first gold medal was in an event called Live Event Planning. As part of her presentation, Alexis planned a wedding, all the way from the cost of the napkins to making an actual wedding centerpiece, and a wedding cake, which I got to taste, and it was absolutely delicious. Alexis's second gold medal was in accessories, where she created a Chanel bag, and she got a first from Almond High School with a one-hundred perfect score. I'd like to welcome her, and you took the gold medal, so have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Reeves. Next, I'd like to introduce our football coach, Coach Ferrer. He's going to talk about some of the accomplishments from our football team.
Thank you, everybody, for coming here tonight, and thank the board for this awards. I have four young men representing our national football team. We had an outstanding year this year. We were eleven and oh, went into the state championship game, unfortunately lost. It's three years in a row we've gone to the finals, and the last three years, these young men have been twenty-nine and six. The four young men here tonight are not only outstanding football players, but they're also the leaders in the mindset of our football team. The first young man, Sahid Lakhon, is a wide receiver, defensive back. He is now not only getting notoriety for being one of the best players in the state of New Jersey, but he's become a national recruit. He has offers, I cannot even tell you how many, I don't know what they're way over double digits, let's put it that way, and if you ask who they are, it's the who's who. So, everybody knows the LSU's, the Ohio States. But more importantly than that, he's a great young man, and he keeps his head on straight, which I know he will. We expect to see great things from him down the road, and this year, he was first team all-shore, first team all-group five, first team all-Monmouth County, Sahid Lakhon. Our next young man, also a junior. We have two juniors and two seniors, so hopefully, we should be okay again next year. This next young man is a junior. He is a two-year starter linebacker. He's already our all-time leading tackler. He is the record for most tackles in career, and most tackles in a season. More importantly, he's just as good in the classroom as he is on the football field. Chris Nesces was invited this past weekend to a Judy Day at Princeton University, and will be going to numerous Ivy League schools for visits. They are all interested in him. This year, Chris made first team all-shore, first team all-state all-group five, first team all-Monmouth County, Chris Nesces. Our next young man, Johnny Peachey, is a three-year starter, a two-sport all-shore, first-team all-shore athlete, who'll be attending East Strasburg in the fall on a football scholarship. He was the captain of our team, a team leader, arm and off the field, led our team at defensive tackle, at offensive tackle. When we were playing offense, we ran behind Johnny. When we were playing defense, he got all the double teams, but he rose to the occasion week in and week out, and led us to the eleven-and-o season until we got to the championship game. He is a person who will be surely missed because he was basically too repeat, starting on offense and starting on defense. Johnny made first team all-shore, first team all-state all-group five, first team all-Monmouth County, and we're going to miss him a lot, Johnny Peachey. Last but not least, our next young man, Anthony Ferguson, is a three-year starter, another two-sport athlete, another first-team all-shore in two sports, basketball and football. He came to us as a basketball player, and we found him in playing football, and probably the best thing he ever did, best thing for us, anyway. I think he brought in after a while, and I truly believe that he has come to love football. But Anthony is leaving Almond High School as our all-time wide receiver. He's also going to be attending Harvard in the fall. He is a National Honor Society student, another young man who's not only a great kid on the field and a great leader, but he's a great person, and on the field and off the field. Like I said, he'll be attending Harvard next year, first team all-shore, first team all-group five, first team all-Monmouth County, Anthony Ferguson.
Thank you, Coach Ferrer. I'd like to ask Anthony to set up here for the next set of awards. We're lucky enough to have Anthony in two sports, and he's obviously just heard the accolades that he brings to the football team and how loved he is there, while we're pretty lucky to have him as a basketball player as well. On the court, Anthony scored thirteen-hundred-and-sixty-two points as a four-year starter. His accolades this year include an invitation to the senior state all-star game, the short conference senior all-star game, the Husky Classic all tournament, first team, first team all-district, Asbury Park Press first team all-shore, the coach's selection first team all-shore, and the short conference co-player of the year. As you've heard already, Anthony will be attending Harvard, and we're very proud of this young man and what he does in the classroom and on the field on the court, so thank you, Anthony. Now, I'd like to call Coach President, who's going to talk about one of our outstanding wrestlers.
Good evening. I have a pleasure of presenting John Peachey with an award tonight. John, of us, was a co-captain this year. He was all first team all-shore, first team in conference, first team all-Monmouth County Wrestler of the Year by the Star Ledger. Was a two-time state place winner, picking seventh and third. Also, was a two-time region champ, and a two-time district champ, a three-time regional wrestler. Needless to say, that's a pretty good wrestler. Was all-time wind leader, currently now at Hay School with a hundred and twenty, and has a hundred wins as a heavyweight, which is pretty difficult to do considering you're a sophomore wrestling at a heavyweight weight class. One thing I do wish he did a little bit better was style shoes a little quicker for practice, but I do all form, Peachey didn't know. John took third place this year, was a quite an accomplishment, and most of the time, we have a lighter guy, they jump into coach's arms, but John thought it would be a good idea to jump into my arms, so you have to slip this to your back. Again, he is more important than a great athlete, he's a two-athletes sport athlete, football and wrestling, which he settled in. Great captain, great leader, great person, and we're going to miss him. He is going to East Strasburg for football next year.
And last but certainly not least, I'd like to introduce Coach Reeves, who's going to talk about two outstanding and remarkable students for track.
The next individual, I can describe in two words, intense and dominant. I'll give you a little story about Sahid. Sahid this year came onto us for the first time, and we knew he had something very special, but things weren't going the way he thought initially. After Monmouth County Championships, the individual that beat Sahid turned around and looked at him and said, "Stick to football." I think Coach Ferrer can attest that you don't want to light fire in Sahid, that he can not be lit, all right? What happened next, he went on to win Central Jersey Group Four State Sectional Championship, the short conference championship, and in doing so, he needs that young man gave him a little bit of advice. He is an Almond High School record holder in the fifty-five. He was first team all-shore by the Shore Coach and Track and Field Coach Association, and first team all-district, Sahid Lakhon. I promised, I promised something to catch on later, I was trying to keep it short. She was the captain for our team in the team of 85, who was the girl that she was the captain. It was truly Mary Grace's team. She was very, she had a very dominant season and I think that what started this season was the end of last season. Mary Grace was the favorite to win the 400 meters in state sectionals and she was cleaning and fell and that didn't happen. So she was very driven this entire season and put on a dominant season. Mary Grace won the Central Jersey Group Four State Sectionals in the 400 meters. She came back an hour later and won the Central Jersey Group Four State Sectionals in 800 meters. She was a three whole regional school district regular in both events. She was first team all, first team allshore by the Asbury Park Press, first team allshore by the Shore Track Association. She sprinted throughout the year by the coaches. She was named athlete of the year by the Asbury Park Press and she finished third this, she was third team allstate and fifth at the Nationals in a emergency.
Thank you very much, everyone, and enjoy your experience.
Every time we do this, I do receive some flak because principals are your orders, so we try to make sense of that. The principals meeting, I'm sure Ms. Kirby will let me know that how it is last information now. But I would like to call Ms. Kirby.
Good evening. First of all, I have to start by thanking my athletes for sitting as long as they have. It's not easy to get athletes to sit and I want to thank the board for standing as long as we have. So, thank you. The first recipient of the award tonight is very special to me. Tonight or today was Yom HaShua, National Holocaust Remembrance Day. And this wonderful woman epitomizes everything that Yom HaShua is about, and that is peace, tolerance, and love. Ten years ago, I was a new principal and I was there a month. School had opened and we suffered a tragedy. There's nothing greater than the loss of a student. If anyone needs a person on their crisis team, Camille Nusari is the woman. She has stood by me through not only that crisis, unfortunately, there were others to come. I couldn't ask for a better partner. She sees things for what they are. She looks and sees the strategy, the detail, the multiple options. She's decisive, she's a collaborator, she listens to what we call the business unpopular advice with a smile. She's calm, she's courageous, she's positive. She will take risks in the face of risk. In a time of crisis, we all have the potential to kind of work up to a new level and to do things we never thought possible. And Camille Nusari does that. She was honored by the Howler Chamber of Commerce for her years of service. She has spent 13 years at Howler High School and is extremely entrenched within our community. And I would like Camille to come forward to be honored formally in front of our Board And now, making his debut to a smaller audience, so he's not that nervous, is Mr. Pete Nehan. He is the new senior over at Howler High School.
Thank you for sticking around. I'd like to congratulate all the athletes and all the members. I started as a senior at Howler High School back on the board first and I addressed our athletes back then, explained to them that I had very big shoes to fill. Unfortunately, it was very small jacket. We had many accomplishments this winter. The accomplishments we're going to discuss this evening, people we're going to bring up are really what M&amp;A as far as the coaching is about, in that team aspect, bringing kids together and working. Like I said, we have many individual accolades. We have a few, but many for this evening, all about team events and how they all came together to accomplish some great things. We had some state titles, actually all state titles, and a national championship. But at this time, I'd like to bring up Coach John Gattiano.
Thank you. I'd like to first acknowledge three individuals that really led our team this year to success, to finishing first place at the Rebel Classic, A-North Champions, eight years in a row, and District 21 Champions. I'd like to start off with a junior who was, finished the season 35-9, 81 career wins, three-time varsity letter winner. He was a Rebel Classic Champion, District 21 Champion, second place in Region Six, finished top 16 in the state of New Jersey. He was first team all A-North, two-time all-district team, first team, all-Monmouth first team, and allshore second team. At 145 pounds, a senior with a 35-10 record, a career record of 95 wins, a four-time varsity letter winner, a Rebel Classic Champion, a two-time District 21 Champion, a two-time Region Six place winner. He finished the season seventh place in the state of New Jersey, all A-North first team, a three-time all-District 21 first team, all-Monmouth first team, allshore second team, Ashanti Also a senior, at 132 pounds, he finished the season 38-3, a career record of 111 wins. He was our captain of our team, a four-time varsity letter winner, a two-time Rebel Classic Champion, a two-time District 21 Champion, a Region Six Champion who just beat the Region Finals, a sophomore national champion, a state qualifier, all A-North first team, two-time District 21, I'm sorry, two-time all-district first team, all-Monmouth second team, allshore
We also have another honor. John Gattiano is, to me, the epitome of a gentleman. He is an amazing coach, teacher, educator. John was the District 21 coach of the District 21.
We had tons of success once again with our bowling program. We came home with a truck full of trophies this year and they asked me which kind of day they were going to be. And I explained that it was a hard raise and an expedition on the school. I'd like to introduce right now Coach Dave Plankford and cheerleader Coach Joe Spatter.
Thank you and good evening. The bowling teams had great seasons this year, both the guys and the girls. Guys started out rough, but they came through to the end, won Central Jersey Group Four. I'd like to recognize the gentleman there. They also won the FRHSD Championship. Members of the guys' team, I can hold applause like I'm all up here, freshman Brandon Burgos, freshman TJ Carey, freshman Jeremy Isaacs, sophomore Mike Kastan, sophomore Zach Johns, sophomore Nolan Spangler, junior Raul Horvath, junior Tyler Gulpe, and senior captain Max Our girls' team had another great year. They won the FDU tournament for the sixth consecutive year. They were district champions. They went undefeated in A-North for the second season in a row. They are Monmouth County Champions for the fourth consecutive year. Currently have a 81-game regular season winning streak dating back to 2011. And they won the Central Jersey Group Four Championship for the second season in a row. I'd like to bring them up. Freshman Reed Njeris, freshman Noah Letson, sophomore Katie McBuck, sophomore Jess Lerner, junior Michelle Bolino, junior Kristen Natoli, junior Sarah Denofa. And our senior captains, Leanne Reed and Jamie Delli. I've just been told that Leanne Reed is accepting a $20,000 a year scholarship to attend Golden Delta University. And our other captain, Judy Kennedy, is accepting a full ride scholarship and will be going
Thank you, Coach Plankford. Thank you, Coach Ferrer. At this time, I'd like to bring up Coach Ashley Dodds.
This year, the 2012-2013 competition team was coached by Deanna Markvich, Sandra Fuzwick, Jess Barry, and myself. The team is made up of 21 girls and typically most of them are three-sport athletes in three seasons of training. The competition team practices between three and five times a week, perfecting their skills and tumbling and stunting and crazy flexibility stunts. They're expected to maintain a high academic standard and for some also do full part-time jobs after school. This year, the competition team hosted their second annual Rebel Classic at Howler High School, which hosted teams from various rec and school and All-Star programs. We also fundraised for breast cancer awareness and research, American Cancer Society, and various short projects from damage funding campaign. The high school competition team competes in one of the most dynamic and strenuous divisions that there is, and that's the all-music large group division. And this year, they compete at local, regional, state, and national competitions and Nationals in Atlanta, Georgia. For the first time ever, Howler High School competition cheerleaders are state and national title holders, hitting 13 bowl phases at Nationals, which is almost unheard of, and scoring On behalf of the coaching staff, I would like to thank cheerleaders, their families, Howler High School family, and the rest of the three whole regional staff for their hard work and support throughout our whole journey this season. So, here are your 2013 national and state level four champions. Freshman Gabrielle Nazzin. Three things. Samantha Barbieri. Sophomore Erin Maisich. Junior Sarah Whitmore. Senior E-Captain Shannon Roberts. Frankie Neal. Senior E-Captain Emily Bravo.
That's all we have for Howler High School. Thanks for coming out and sticking around.
We need that to order. Board reports. Color participation, we have no one who signed up.
I do have one additional item for the agenda. I'll read it into the record. It's an Alpha 3 resolved by the board to adopt a group of discipline committees finding recommendations for student number 150243.
Then we have the agenda. We made motion for the agenda. I'll make a motion to take it all at once. Thank you, Bill. We have a second. We have discussion. So you know, discussion. Mr. Estollet?
Yes.
Mr. Moreno?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sotera?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
I'd just like to take a moment to ask Mr. Angelozzi to stand, pass the crowd. Okay, the agenda is at H1, 2, we have 2. So that was passed. And that brings us to old business, new business. Closing Board Education business, we made a motion.
Motion.
So shall you say, show shall be done. Thank you for coming.